Good evening. Welcome to the Township of Abington's Board of Commissioners meeting for January 12th, 2017, and may we have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Sutcliffe?
Here.
Stigman?
Here.
Stages?
Here.
Rollins?
Here.
Myers?
Here.
Fryber?
Here.
Thoman?
Here.
Deeseito?
Here.
Farron?
Here.
Gillespie?
Here.
Heckler?
Here.
Callenhouse?
Here.
Hine?
Here.
Lucker?
Here. May everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to make an announcement that an executive session was held on Thursday, December the 15th, 2016, following the final budget meeting at 7:15 PM to discuss a personnel At this time, I'm going to read Resolution Number 17-006, Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.'s memorial service. Whereas Martin Luther King Jr. was a man committed to peaceful coexistence where all men would be free from racism, bigotry, and discrimination, and whereas many people look to the Reverend Martin Luther King Jr. as a source of inspiration for promoting harmony, cooperation, and understanding, and whereas the third Monday in January has been declared a national holiday, and on that day, January 16th, 2017, Abington Township will conduct a memorial service at 12 noon, which will be attended by civic, religious, school, and government leaders, and whereas a citizen of Abington Township will be honored as the 32nd annual recipient of the Martin Luther King Memorial Award. Now therefore, the Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim January 16th, 2017, as Martin Luther King Day and encourages all interested citizens to participate in the Township Memorial Service resolved this 12th day of January 2017. Thank you. At this time, I'd like to call on Chief William Kelly to make a presentation of commendation to retiree Lieutenant Michael Gallagher.
Mr. President, members of the Board. Mike Gallagher began his career with Abington in April 29th, 1991, and is retiring from our Police Department after 26 years of dedicated service to the Abington Township community. You will tell by the information about to provide to you that Mike has had a widely varied career with us and has contributed in so many ways. He was assigned to the Patrol Division where he served as a field training officer, a baton and rifle instructor, an evidence technician, and was a member of our award-winning tactical team and bicycle patrol. Mike then served in detectives from 1999 to 2002, and then was promoted to the rank of sergeant. He served as a patrol sergeant first, and then as a detective sergeant, and then spent five and a half years running our special investigations unit doing undercover investigations, and then spent the last six months as a line detective sergeant. He was promoted to lieutenant in 2011, where he served as patrol lieutenant and the commander of both the Commendation Review Board and the Field Training Officers, and Mike was one of the ones that helped us out by being our accreditation manager and took us through a very arduous process, including the international accreditation through Kalia, something that no other police department in this region has accomplished, and only six other municipal police departments out of the 1,117 in Pennsylvania have ever accomplished. During his career, Mike has received 25 letters of commendation. He is leaving us because he was just sworn in as the Chief of Police in Buckingham Township Police Department.
First, they wanted to have the visual of the littlest person in the room next to the tallest person in the room, Lieutenant Mike Gallagher, to acknowledge with sincere appreciation your 26 years of dedicated service to the citizens of Abington Township, April 1991 through January 2017. Congratulations, and congratulations on your new position.
Thank you very much.[346.22][346.22](Applause).
Yeah.[348.22][348.22](Laughter).
That's wild.
Not much.
Thank you. Everybody in this room who knows me knows this is not the place for me, behind a microphone, because I never felt comfortable there, but as I watched the chief over the years, I'm going to have to get comfortable with that. Just like to first just point out my family over here. This is my son Ryan. Next to him is my sister Dee, my brother Rick, my lovely wife Trish right there, our friends Floss and Vince Sarator. Thanks for coming.[388.81][388.81](Applause). I'd just like to thank Board of Commissioners and the people who preceded you in those seats for giving me a great opportunity to work for what I know is the best residents around. They supported us, you supported us, and I was able to raise a family because of the township. I came to work every day and I laughed. I've helped people, and it's been by far the best experience of my life, and it allows me to move on and do what I'm doing next. I would be remiss if I didn't just say a few words about the people who got me here, because it's not by accident that I'm here. I thank the chief for selecting me and being such a good role model all these years, the township as a whole. You come out of Abington and put that on your resume. It means something. The FTO program, more specifically Tony DeSandro, who's here today, is definitely my first mentor as a police officer. Tony taught me the right way to do things, and that's stuck with me, and that's why I stayed with the Field Training Officer Program, was a supervisor there and commanded. After that, Carl Knott took me under his wing, showed me how to be a good supervisor. I was promoted to sergeant and was luckily appointed in detectives under John Livinggood, who, as all you know here, is going to be our next chief in Abington, and he's a gentleman, and he showed me how to do the job the correct way, and thank you. That's all I have to say. I know we have a busy night here. I know we have a busy night ahead, there's a lot of things that go over, and I'd just like to thank you again, all the people who talk time out of their days to be here, my friends, people who wear the same uniform as me for the last 26 years, proud to say
Needless to say, Commissioners, we're very proud of Mike and his accomplishment being selected, a very, very competitive process to become the chief in Buckingham Township, and Mike is now the fifth Abington officer, a former Abington officer that wears a Chief of Police, Chief of Badge, and we're very proud of all of them, and it's partly because, as Mike so eloquently said, because of the support and that the Board has given us to be able to train our people well and develop them, and you deserve a tremendous amount of the credit, and I won't try to repeat that because Mike said it far better than I did. Mike, you did an excellent job. Thank you, Mike. Mr. President, members of the Board, we're here also today to swear in two of our new recruit officers, and so I'd like to tell you about the first one. He was born and raised in Philadelphia and graduated from Northeast High School. He attended East Strasburg University and then transferred to Temple University, where he is completing his Bachelor of Science degree in criminal justice. I mean, very unique about this individual, he was not only a member of the Temple Owls' football team, he actually passed up his final year of eligibility to play college football for the Owls to take the position with Abington Township. His hobbies include playing football and lifting weights, and I want to introduce to The other one that we're swearing in tonight, Commissioners, was born and raised in Abington Township and currently resides in Abington with his wife Carrie and his two daughters, Sadie and Ryland. Michael is a 2008 graduate of Abington High School and has been with the Abington Fire Company for 10 years, where he currently holds the rank of lieutenant. His father is a longtime Public Works Department employee, and his father-in-law, Tony Siliberto, is who in the audience with us today, is a retired corporal with the Abington Township Police Department. His hobbies include spending time outdoors with his family and playing and watching lacrosse. Commissioners, allow me to introduce you, Michael Jones Jr.[715.82][715.82](Applause). I'm sure you all noticed that both of them, their last name is Jones, but believe it or not, they are not brothers.[737.82][737.82](Laughter).
They are not.
That's right, exactly. And now let me please call forward Judge John Kessler will be issuing the oath of office to our two new recruit officers.
Gentlemen, why don't you hold this Bible and put your hand there, and you can step forward, please, and raise your opposite hand, and I'd like you to repeat after me. After I say "I," please state your name. I
Michael Jones Jr.
Do swear
You swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution and the laws
The Constitutions and the laws.
Of the United States
Of the United States.
Commonwealth of Pennsylvania
The Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
And the Township of Abington
And the Township of Abington.
And that I will faithfully discharge
And I will faithfully discharge
The duties of my office
The duties of my office.
As a police officer for Abington Township
As a police officer for Abington Township.
And will obey the rules and regulations
And will obey the rules and regulations.
Policies and procedures
Policies and procedures.
Governing sworn members of the Abington Township Police Department.
Governing sworn members of the Abington Township Police Department.
Jordan, would you like to introduce your family, please?
Here with me today, I have my mother, Robin Jones, my father, Kevin Jones, my grandmother, my aunt, my grandfather, my cousin, my sister over there, and my girlfriend over there, right next to me.[868.32][868.32](Applause).
Michael?
Tonight with me are my parents, Michael, of course, Michael and Kelly, my father-in-law, Paul, I've got my beautiful wife Carrie, and my daughter Sadie. I don't know where Ryland is, she's probably right there, my brother-in-law, aunts and uncles, my grandparents came up from Delaware. I appreciate everybody coming up here.
Before you guys leave, if you'd stand by just for a moment. Commissioners, 31 years ago, almost to the day, I sat at this desk and attended my first Abington Township Commissioners Board Meeting, and as you know, we have made plans for a orderly transition in our Police Department and a succession planning we've been working on for five years. My retirement was all planned out, matter of fact, some people would say it was probably planned out better than most things in my life, but, and we were going to be going straight through till the end of March, at which time, of course, Deputy Chief John Livinggood has already been appointed to take over as chief by the Board, and, but we all know how life works out, sometimes things don't work out the way we plan them. On Tuesday, I got a call from Josh Shapiro, who of course is, on Monday, becomes the Attorney General of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, the Chief Law Enforcement Officer of the Commonwealth, and asked me to take on the job as the Chief of Criminal Investigations. That position is over all of the agents, almost 300 agents across the state that do criminal investigations, and it was a very difficult thing to say no to, because I think you all know that in addition to loving Abington, which you know I do, right? You know I do, but in addition to that, I love my profession. I love law enforcement, and many people have heard me in recent years saying, "We need to have more leadership in law enforcement at the state level." Well, Josh was kind enough to give me the opportunity to try to put my actions where my mouth was, and so I have agreed to take that position. He told me to take as long as I wanted to make the transition, just so I started with him on Tuesday.[1041.04][1041.04](Laughter). And so I will be, this will be my last official Township Board Meeting. I will be going there on Tuesday to be sworn in as the Chief of Criminal Investigation for the, for the state, and I know that many of you are planning on coming up anyway for Josh is swearing in, and certainly I not only would welcome any of you and all of you who would like to be there to see your, another one of your Abington representatives getting sworn into state, I would love to have you there, and if any of you decide you want to do that, please make it so, let us know so that we can make it, help accommodate you being there, and it obviously means a tremendous amount to me, because despite wherever I go, my love for the township is always going to be there, and you know that. So I just wanted to tell you that, that unexpectedly, this will be my last meeting as your Chief of Police, but I, you know how much this all means to me, and just like all the other ones, and just like Mike so eloquently did, I just have to say to everybody here, all the members of the Police Department certainly, the members of the Board of Commissioners, and the great people in our community, thank you very much for the great opportunity. When I interviewed with this job, they asked me how long they thought I'd be Chief of Police, and I told them, "Probably three to five years."[1134.83][1134.83](Laughter). And they said, "Three to five years? Why such a short period of time?" And I said, "Well, that's the normal professional life expectancy, expectation for somebody coming in from the outside, a chief coming in from the outside." Well, I didn't do a very good job estimating it. It's been a little longer than that, but no matter how long it was, I couldn't ask for any more, so I just want to, from the bottom of my heart, I want to take this opportunity I get almost as many applause as the Jones Brothers.[1191.76][1191.76](Laughter).
Take a slight recess.
Really? Is that right? How about that?
It's the only guy in the room that's talking.
She ran her gun.
Right, right.
April 1st.
I'm sure he's not.
I'm just, that gets too important.
I'm afraid of that.
He's going to be, they're going to be amazing.
Oh, yeah.
Talk about like the circle of
I'm sure I'm not, I'm going to give one of those papers.
Make sure I maintain.
I didn't realize that's what I was doing.
He gave up.
He gave up and Eric Powers worked on him.
He had no idea.
I don't know about that.
I haven't, I don't know if I know, even Mike I know from
Okay, we'll resume at this time.
At this time, I'd like to make a motion to appoint John Livinggood as Chief of Police effective February 1, 2017.
Second.
Second.
And I so move.
Second. Second.
We're moving to second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.[1235.15][1235.15](Applause). At this time, I'd like to call on Vice President Stephen Klein for approval of the minutes from December 2016.
Thank you, President Lucker. We have two board meetings to approve minutes for. We have a motion to approve the Board of Commissioners' meeting minutes of December 8th, 2016, and I so move.
Second.
It's been moved to second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
And then we have a motion to approve, to approve the Board of Commissioners' 2017 Final Budget Meeting Minutes of December 15th, 2016, and I so move.
Second.
It's been moved to second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. At this time, I'm going to ask Commissioner, Vice President Stephen Klein, to continue with the appointments to the volunteer boards and commissions and for the appointment of the Township Engineer.
Thank you, President Lucker. I'd like to make a motion to appoint Mike Powers Township Engineer for the calendar year of 2017, and I so move.
Second.
It's been moved to second. Any comments from Commissioners? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Congratulations, Michael.
We have several volunteer board appointment, reappointments, excuse me. If there's multiples, I'll go through and ask if there's anybody objecting to taking them in the slate. So first, we have a motion to approve Richard Titel, Esquire for the Civil Service Commission Solicitor.
Second.
If you want to vote on each one at a time? I think we have to vote on each one at a time, correct?
You don't have to. If you want to get, if you want to go through the list and then get a motion and second on all of them together
Okay.
Then you can just vote on them all together. If people need to pull something out or want to pull something out, then you'll need to do them individually.
Okay. Is there, well, I would first say, is there anybody that, is there any board where there's multiple appointments or any board for that matter that anybody would want to vote?
I had one question. I thought there was two nominees for IDA.
There's actually one reappointment in the IDA, and there's two current vacancies on the IDA. For tonight's purposes, we're just reappointing the one member, and hopefully the February meeting will be filling those two vacancies.
Because I'm aware that you're trying to make a loan, and I know that, so the other two haven't been presented yet, the two?
No, they haven't. They're still, the IDA still has three active members, so they do have a quorum.
They have a quorum?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. So with that, then I'll read the reappointments. You have a Civil Service Commission Solicitor, Richard Titel, Esquire, that's a yearly reappointment. We have for the vacancy, vacancy chair, that's a yearly, that's a yearly reappointment, Dee Gregory Holt, Hearing Officer for Act 511, Tax Appeals, that's pending. Planning Commission, four years for each person. Reappointments of Ronald Rosen, Glenn Cooper, and Lucy Strackhaus. Environmental Advisory Council, three years, Susan Myroff, Jim Webb, and Karen McGarry-Rosen. Library Board of Trustees, three years, Garrett Page, Teresa Dekabach, Brian Mays, and Elaine Shea. Industrial Development Authority, a five-year term, for Bruce Toll. Civil Service Commission, there are none. Human Relations Commission, three years, Dave Ron D'Onelli. Red Light Cameron Hearing Officer, a yearly reappointment, John Walco. Zoning Hearing Board, five years, John DiPremio. Shade Tree Commission, five years, there are none. Economic Development Committee, three years, Doug Calantine, Chris Lionetti, and Wendy Klinghoffer. With that, I make a motion to
And if I could just make one clarification, two of those appointments, the vacancy board and zoning hearing board reappointment, are by resolution.
Okay, so I'll read those later.
Well, that's, we can see, the same motion.
Same motion. Okay. So with that, everybody has the resolutions within their packet, so I make a motion to approve the reappointments listed on our agenda and the resolutions relating to both the vacancy board and the zoning hearing board.
Second.
It's been moved to second. Any comments from Commissioners? Any from staff? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes.
And I believe that takes care of
Thank you, Commissioner Klein. At this time, before we start our formal agenda, I'd like to call on Commissioner Stephen Kalanowski.
Thank you, Commissioner. Nicole, would you like to come up here? And might be Mom and Dad, please. Nicole?
Nicole is a new business owner in my ward, and I am so proud to bring new business into Ward 6, and Nicole's been working on this for a while, Nicole Scholler. Maybe Mom and Dad would like to give out the, they've got a present for each one of our Commissioners here, and Nicole would like to say something, so here you go.
Thank you. I'm beyond proud to announce that I opened my dream, my flower shop on January 1st. Flowers by Nicole is located at the intersections of Lime Kilm Pike and Central Ave. It's 2879 Lime Kilm Pike. I've been working on opening the shop for the last three years, and to see it all come together perfectly is very rewarding. I've been working as a floral designer for the last 10 years now. I couldn't be more excited to start my journey and be a part of the Abington family. Please feel free to stop by and see everything I offer, there's tons of flowers and gifts. Thank you.
Yeah, it's great to see business in Abington, so Nicole, we really appreciate you choosing
Abington to make your business, and we will all support you definitely. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Lovely flowers.
Thank you, Nicole.
Nicole, you want to introduce Mom and Dad?
This is my mom, Lori Scholler. This is my dad, Robert Scholler. My shop is on the side of my dad's shop, so he's right on Lime Kilm by the service center, and then mine's right on the side. Yeah.
Good time to open a store.
Thank you.
Congratulations.[1586.01][1586.01](Applause).
And I have to recognize Fran Early here. Fran made this happen. Fran's a big supporter of Ward 6, so thank you, Fran.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Commissioner Kalanowski.
And thank you for the carnations, they're beautiful. Thank you.
Okay, at this time, we'll start our formal agenda, and I'd like to call on Commissioner Tom Heckler, Director of the Public Works Department.
Thank you, President Lucker. The Public Works Committee has two agenda items for consideration this evening. First is PW1, and this is a motion to accept a CMAQ grant in the amount of $975,245.75 for improvements to the Eastern Road Corridor, including new signal equipment and interconnection with the Eastern Road Corridor and Susquehanna Road Corridor. Funds for the grant match will be drawn from the permanent improvement Nicole is a new business owner in my ward and I am so proud to bring new business into Ward 6. And Nicole's been working on this for a while, Nicole Schouler. Maybe Mom and Dad would like to give out the, they've got a present for each one of our Commissioners here. And Nicole would like to say something, so here you go.
I'm beyond proud to announce that I opened my dream, my flower shop on January 1st. Flowers by Nicole is located at the intersections of Lime Kilm Pike and Central Ave. It's 2879 Lime Kilm Pike. I've been working on opening the shop for the last three years and to see it all come together perfectly is very rewarding. I've been working as a floral designer for the last 10 years now. I couldn't be more excited to start my journey and be a part of the Abington family. Please feel free to stop by and see everything I offer, there's tons of flowers and gifts. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's great to see business in Abington, so Nicole, we really appreciate you choosing Abington to make your business and we will all support you definitely. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Lovely flowers.
Thank you, Nicole.
Nicole, you want to introduce Mom and Dad?
This is my mom, Lori Schouler, this is my dad, Robert Schouler. My shop is on the side of my dad's shop, so he's right on Lime Kilm by the service center and then mine's right on the side. I know, I say it's coming up.
Good time to open a store.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
And I have to recognize Fran Early here. Fran made this happen. Fran's a big supporter of Ward 6, so thank you, Fran.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Commissioner Kalanowski.
And thank you for the carnations, they're beautiful. Thank you.
At this time, we'll start our formal agenda and I'd like to call on Commissioner Tom Hecker, Director of the Public Works Department.
Thank you, President Luker. The Public Works Committee has two agenda items for consideration this evening. First is PW1, and this is a motion to accept a CMAQ grant in the amount of $975,245.75 for improvements to the Eastern Road Corridor, including new signal equipment and interconnection with the Eastern Road Corridor and Susquehanna Road Corridor. Funds for the grant match will be drawn from the Permanent Improvement Fund and I so move.
Second.
Removed and seconded, any comments from Commissioners? Commissioner Schreiber.
I didn't know if we were going to get any explanation about this all, but I guess what I'm wondering about is the, is this from Ed?
Yes.
Okay. Ed, if, is this going to coordinate them more so that like on Eastern Road, near Bradfield where it backs up and things like that? Is that the purpose of it? Could you tell us more about that?
That's correct. It's going to be all the way from the Cheltenham border up to, I guess almost Welsh Road. Actually Hamilton Avenue because the mall's already coordinated. So those intersections from, from Cheltenham border all the way through to the mall area and down through the mall area on Moreland Road will all be coordinated. Similar to what we did on Huntington Pike and also on York Road. If everything works right, tactically, you're supposed to be able to start at 1. And if, as you're leading Cheltenham, technically should be able to start there. If you do the speed limit, you should not catch a light all the way through. It works some, for the most part, on York Road and also working very well on Huntington Pike. That's basically part of what this grant is for. The second part of that grant is a bonus for us because that, all those intersections all the way through are really aging. And when you come to controllers and the equipment that goes on each intersection, controller's life is only maybe five, six to 10 years. All those, most of that equipment there is well over that. This will help us upgrade every intersection along Eastern Road as we had done on Huntington Pike and also on York Road. If we don't do this with this grant, then the board will have to fund it 100%. This way, we're only funding that work that's going to be done on them 20%, because every intersection there is going to have to be upgraded at some point in time for the next three to five years.
Thank you, that's terrific, it sounds good.
Really good. Okay, were there any other questions from Commissioners? Any from staff?
I just wanted to point out, since we didn't have committee meetings this month, we'll have to take public comment on each of the general items through the course of the meeting.
Thank you, thank you. Are there any comments from residents? There are none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the motion passes.
Thank you. And PW2, this is a motion to enter into an agreement with McMahon Associates for Engineering and Design Services for the CMAQ grant for Eastern Road in the amount of $70,250 and I so move.
Second.
Removed and seconded, any comments from Commissioners?
Mr. President.
From staff? Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Farron.
Thank you, just curious, do we have quotes on the other engineering firms?
Yes. I sent three out, I got two back. I was comfortable with all three if any one of them came in lower. The lowest that came in was McMahon Associates. The second lowest was Traffic Planning and Design. Both of them have done a lot of work in Township, as has, has done, as Penoni has done also. Like I said, I'm very comfortable with all three. I'm very comfortable with McMahon's bid. Okay, and I spoke to him about it. Actually, he's very familiar with that Eastern Road Corridor because he's done some work for the state already. So my thought is, he was able to come in really low because he's already done some preliminary work, so that would eliminate that preliminary work.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Klein.
So was McMahon the lowest out of the bids that you received?
Yes, that's correct. By quite, quite a bit. And we did, I did go over both of the bids. I had Mike DiDomenico, who's my traffic signal foreman, he went over both of them and they were both comparable equally. Like I said, I think Penoni was able to come, I mean McMahon was able to come in a lot lower because he's already done a lot of the legwork already.
And is this, is this money that comes, is this money that will be part of the match?
That's, that's a, the whole match will be almost all the engineering and inspection and some of the construction work.
And what, and how is this being paid? What fund is this coming out of?
Permanent Improvement, we just, the one we just passed prior to it, to this.
Okay, because it didn't, okay. I didn't see it in the. Okay, thank you.
Any other comments from Commissioners? Any from staff? Just one last thing, I just want to give you a timeline on this, on this grant here. This grant here looks like engineering is going to take probably till around August of this year to get completed. The PennDOT, I wasn't aware, but apparently there's a 12-month timeframe for PennDOT to do their reviews, their recommendations, the back and forth. And then once that's all done, then this project should be let by August of 18. So work should begin right after that. Hopefully, everything will be done by the following year, or the following year. Okay, any other comments from staff?
If I could just clarify on the match, we may recall as part of the budget process, we put a quarter million dollars away in the Permanent Improvement Fund, the service match for grants. This is a significant grant and it's going to eat up a major portion of that allocation. But in addition to those funds, we also received about $230,000 this year from Penn State as part of their first contribution associated with the dormitory project. At Finance Committee, Kevin's going to present a proposal that that money also be allocated for a match for future grants, as well as another contribution we expect this year from Penn State.
Very good. Good, good work, gentlemen. Thank you. Any other comments from staff? Any from residents? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
And that concludes the Public Works Committee's business this evening.
Thank you, Commissioner Hecker, and thank you, Ed, and staff. This time, I'd like to call on Commissioner Ben Sanchez, Director of Code Enforcement and Land Development.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight, we have one item, CE1, Resolution Number 2017007 Liquor License Transfer Giant Food Store LLC 737 Huntington Pike. This is a motion to authorize the advertisement for a formal hearing and final action on the application of the Giant Food Store located at 737 Huntington Pike for the intermunicipal transfer of a liquor license to that location. The hearing will be held on February 9, 2017 at 7:30 PM in the second floor boardroom of the Abington Township Administration Building, located at 1176 Old York Road, Abington, PA 19001. And I so move.
Second.
Removed and seconded, any comments from Commissioners?
Is it beer and wine? Because we didn't have a committee meeting. Just beer and wine.
It's a beer and wine, yeah, it's a beer and wine, not a, not a liquor.
Right.
Any other comments from Commissioners? Any from staff? Any comments from residents? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the motion passes.
Mr. President, that concludes the business of the Code Enforcement and Land Development Committee for this evening.
Thank you, Commissioner Ben Sanchez. At this time, Commissioner Lori Schreiber, Director of Public.
Thank you, President Luker. We have three items this evening. First is PS1, a motion to adopt ordinance number 2132, amending Chapter 156 Vehicles and Traffic, Article 3 Parking Regulations, and Section 28 Special Purpose Parking Zones, and I so move.
Second.
Removed and seconded, any comments from Commissioners? Any comments from staff or audience, public? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the motion passes.
PS2 is a motion to advertise ordinance number 2134, amending Chapter 156 Vehicles and Traffic, Article 3 Parking Regulations, and Section 26 Parking Prohibited During Certain Hours. For adoption at the regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Commissioners on February 9, 2017 at 7:30 PM, and I so move.
Second.
Removed and seconded, any comments from Commissioners? Any comments from staff and/or public? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the motion passes.
And PS3 is a motion to authorize Township officials to accept a grant award from the Firemen's Association of the State of Pennsylvania, Recruitment and Retention Local Grant Award in the amount of $5,000, and I so move.
Second.
Removed and seconded, any comments from Commissioners? Comments from staff? Comments from residents? Name and address, please.
Laura Levin, 1431 Bryant Lane. I just, I don't know if that, I assume that grant is probably only for that purpose, but if it may have other purposes. I was actually shocked in the course of some of my recent research to learn that our fire marshal is not certified, licensed, or in any way, in other words, there's not an oversight, a particular oversight body that actually has a license, for instance, with certain requirements with it. Is that something that you could get a grant and maybe a grant like this could be turned towards researching something like that to, in order to see that fire personnel are all completely licensed and that there is a setup in Pennsylvania? I actually was shocked when I, I went all the way up the chain looking for how this oversight worked. So is, do we know if that grant is very specifically for this purpose? If it's not, it's something I'd like to discuss perhaps outside the meeting.
The grant before the board this evening is for recruitment and retention only, but we'll be happy to research Ms. Lehman's suggestion going forward.
All right, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other comments from residents? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the motion passes.
And that concludes our agenda this evening.
Thank you, Commissioner Schreiber. Commissioner John Spiegelman, Director of Public Affairs.
Thank you, President Luker. Tonight, Public Affairs has a robust seven-item agenda. The first one is PA1, this is a motion to adopt ordinance number 2133, amending the Township Human Relations Ordinance by expanding the membership of the commission from five to seven members, and I so move.
Second.
Removed and seconded, any comments from Commissioners? Staff? Any comments from residents? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the motion passes.
PA2 is a motion to advertise ordinance number 2135, amending Chapter 137-4 of the Township Code, Snow and Ice Violations and Penalties, increasing the fine per violation up to a maximum of $1,000 per offense, and I so move.
Second.
Removed and seconded, any comments from Commissioners?
Yes, I have a comment.
Commissioner Kalanowski.
I was just curious, do people actually get fined? I know they get letters or they get, but do they actually get fined? Hello?
They're kind of now.
I believe on occasion, on hardcore cases, they do, but the fine hasn't been changed in 20 years. And I believe now it's capped at $20 and doesn't serve much of a deterrent. It's cheaper to pay a fine than pay somebody to shovel your walk. So by increasing up to a maximum of $1,000, particularly for some of the commercial establishments, it'll be more effective deterrent for people to cooperate in the future.
I just don't know whether they actually get fined. I really would like to find.
There have been, there have been fines.
I, I, there have? And who does it come from, Chief Kelly?
We have, the people that do our parking enforcement are usually the ones that go out and do the snow removal enforcement.
Okay.
And definitely, we have issued them and, matter of fact, going back a few years, we used to issue quite a few of them. And fortunately, because we stayed on top of it, we're normally getting compliance. But we definitely do issue them.
Okay, good.
Okay, Commissioner Hecker, then Commissioner Schreiber, then Commissioner Kalanowski.
So I just wanted to add two questions. So one, so this applies to both residential and commercial properties?
That's correct.
Okay. And secondly, so with a, with a range up to a maximum of 1,000, how will that be determined? And, you know, what is the discretion of the officer or person on site in determining how the fine would be levied?
I would think, and Chief, correct me if I'm wrong, that when they issued the citation, there'd be probably a minimum fine initially unless it's a repeat offender.
I see.
And if they were to appeal that to District Court, it would be up to the District Justice to set the final.
So we're not going to be writing $1,000 fines off at the outset? Okay.
Unless it's Commissioner Klein and.
It's $2,000.
Then, yeah. Then it's.
So first, if there's snow in front of mine, it's Ed's fault.
We're putting sidewalks in.
I have a question, it's really off-subject, so I apologize in advance, but it's, the snow and ice removal just reminded me, because I had this question recently. And Chief, I think this is probably a question for you, but I may be incorrect about that. If somebody leaves snow on the top of their car as they are driving, is that illegal and are they pulled over and are they fined for that?
It is not illegal to have snow on the top of your car. It is illegal to have your vision impaired. And so that's the judgment call that the officer has to make. The snow in and of itself is not, although there's a lot of reasons why we don't like that. In fact, it is not, there's not a violation that says you can't have snow on top of your car. The vision impaired, or the other thing is if you are, if there's a bunch of your snow that's flying off.
That's what I meant, yeah.
Then you certainly can get stopped for that, for actually, it's partly covered under the insecure, what's called the insecure load section. And when officers see those things, they usually do advise them, even if it's something where they're not issuing a citation, they'll pull them over and advise them about why that's not the safest way to do that. But, but actually, in those two cases where the, their ability to see is impaired or there is a significant amount of snow flying off, they can be cited for either one of those examples.
Thank you. You see, you're not going to get out of here that easy tonight. You thought you were done and you're going to just walk out of here, but now we're going to ask you questions, so thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Kalanowski.
So this would be more of a complaint-driven ordinance, correct? And a warning would probably be given before we would fine the person, would you say?
Commissioner, we almost always do that, yes. We, we're not looking to fine our citizens, we're looking to get compliance to the law. Though the streets, the sidewalks cleared off so that kids can walk to school without having to walk in the streets and so on. So that's really what we're looking for. Even the fine doesn't do us any good if it, if it doesn't get shoveled. So as a result, that, we're looking for the compliance and so they're instructed to go out there and see if they can get that done that way. And if not, if it's persistent, then we issue the fine.
Thank you.
Okay, any other?
Not going to labor this, but I do have one more question. Sorry. Do you put a note, do they put a notice on their door? Because there's no time for a letter. I said "letter" before. So they just put something in their door? Okay.
They do, Commissioner.
Okay.
60 degrees outside, we have all these questions. Any other questions regarding snow? Okay? There are none? Where are we? Any other comments or questions from staff? Any from the audience? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the motion passes.
Moving on to PA3.
One opposed, also one opposed.
Oh, I'm sorry. My apologies. Moving on to PA3. This is a motion to approve the form of agreement of sale, subject to final review by Solicitor and to authorize Township officials to make offers to the property owners at 1100, 1102, 1104, and 1106 Old York Road and 1907 Susquehanna Road for purchase of those properties as part of the Old York-Susquehanna Road project. And I so move.
Second.
Removed and seconded, any comments from Commissioners?
I just, if I can just say, these, these agreements were very carefully crafted with a lot of work from Barbara Merly from our Solicitor's office, from Allison Fritschus, who is the Solicitor for the Montgomery County RDA, the Redevelopment Authority, with whom we're, we're working on the Old York-Susquehanna project. And lot, you know, lots of input from our, our team and other Township staff and, you know, Manager LaFever and Assistant Manager Waymire. So I just want to voice my appreciation on behalf of the whole team for all of the hard work in crafting these agreements.
Thank you. Commissioner Klein.
So I'm looking at the appraisal amounts and the total, I think if I have that correct, about $940,000 is the total offers for these properties. Is that where we are with our, with the original budget?
No, the 100, the total is, I don't, I don't remember the figure off the top of my head, but it's something like 800 something that, because it's, there's one that's, there's two that are 190 together and one that's, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but.
I'm looking at the numbers, it's $940,000.
Oh, I thought you said 140,000.
No, 940,000.
Oh, 900, oh, okay, yeah.
Is that within the original budget that we had and for the whole grant setup and all the work?
Yes.
And those figures are retained from appraisals for these properties.
That were done before we rolled that?
Yes. Sorry, I'm sorry about the Commissioner Klein, I thought you said 140,000, I was like, wow, we got a good deal.
Any other comments from Commissioners? Commissioner Bowman.
So we're going to make offers on those properties in accordance with the appraisals, obviously, right?
That's correct.
And then if the.
And then if the homeowners or the property owners don't agree, are we going to at some point cut the negotiations and go to eminent domain, or what's the plan for that?
Well, I think we have to, you know, make that determination if that issue arises, but I think at this point, the only offers that'll go to the property owners is the appraised value. I don't, I don't think there's any intent to go beyond that amount.
Thank you.
We're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna sit and present these offers. We've been in communication on a very regular basis with the property owners, so we're not, you know, any, any future step, I mean, we're hoping everything will just go smoothly, but any future steps, and nothing's going to happen ultimately without the, the board, you know, any changes will need the, will come before the board, need the approval of the board, so there will not be any surprises with these properties.
Okay. Any other questions from commissioners? Let me see, questions from staff and/or audience? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes.
Thank you. Moving on to PA 4. This is a motion authorizing the proper township officials to contract with Louis F. Biasey, landscape contractor, for the 2017 service year in an amount not to exceed $75,000 for the business district landscape maintenance contract. Funds will be drawn from economic development capital accounts reserved for this purpose, and I so move.
Second.
It's been moved to second. Any comments from commissioners? Any comments from staff? And comments from the audience?
Laura Lehman, 1431 Bryant Lane. So you heard it before, I, I am opposed to you doing the business districts. I believe that they should take care of that themselves, unless you want to come out and do my property too. And then also, I'd like to ask that we continue not to entertain the use of pesticides, since you are going to do it anyhow. Ask them, please, not to use pesticides on the trees and various places, and instead to use manual and environmentally sound techniques. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from residents? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes.
Item PA 5 is a motion to adopt resolution number 17-010, approving Abington Township to submit an application to PennDOT for the multimodal transportation fund program. The grant submission will support Eastern Road street scape enhancements, and I so move.
Second.
It's been moved to second. Any comments from commissioners? Comments from staff? And any comments from the residents? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes.
Item PA 6 is a motion to approve the expenditure of no more than $18,000 to be taken from the contingency fund, excuse me, for the repair of the main electrical trunk line supplies power to the Pen bring pool complex, and I so move.
Second.
It's been moved to second. Any comments from commissioners? Any comments from staff or audience? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes.
Our final item, PA 7. This is a motion to reject all bids received for the mowing of township facilities for the years 2017, 2018, and 2019, and to approve the re-advertising of the mowing contract, and I so move.
Second.
It's been moved to second. Any comments? Commissioner Hecker.
Just interested to get a little context on the move to reject, you know, the reasons behind it and what the expectations are moving forward.
Yes, Commissioner, the, originally, the bids were all distributed and opened here in the boardroom publicly. At that time, it was noted that one of the bidders did not include a non collusion affidavit. As a result of that, I contacted the township solicitors who reviewed the situation and felt that the, the fact that that was not in the bid would mean that we should just reject the bids and start over again. The other half of that is that the, when the bids were open, two of the three bidders had increased the lump sum total by about 30%. It was $71,000 in '14, '15, and '16, and generally, it was around $92,000 for both of the other two bidders. The lower bidder was a few thousand dollars less. I felt that was a rather large increase for, even though we had, we did increase, we added two additional cuttings for the properties. Generally, a cutting runs around $6,000, $7,000 for a week, so it should, I was expecting somewhere around $14,000 to $16,000 increase, but it was, as you see, it was about 30, $21,000 by both of them. So just to make it all start over again and hopefully get some better numbers, I was going with the solicitor's recommendation to rebid.
That's helpful context. Will we, are we expecting that the same companies will rebid, or are we, and are we interested in entertaining those bids based on this experience?
Well, two of the contractors that bid are here tonight, and I'm sure have, would like to make some comments, and I have to say that both of the contractors that are here tonight are our current contractors, and they've had the contracts in various forms over the last nine years, and I have been happy with their work. I have no question in that they are capable of doing the job. The low bidder was someone who had bid first time this year, but apparently, and I haven't done the due diligence yet, because we weren't sure how we were going to go with this, but as I understand it, it's a very large company that works with a lot of municipalities as well. I would certainly, would, if, if we do go to rebid, I would certainly would want the two contractors that are here tonight to rebid it, because I am happy with their work, and they're, generally, their pricing has been fairly good. This year, it just seems like it jumped up quite a bit more than I expected it to.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate the context.
Are there any other comments? Commissioner Kalanowski.
Is it always normal to go three years out? Or is that just something, maybe you could explain that?
No, it's, I don't remember when it was that we started doing the three-year bid, because we had done it on a yearly basis, and just the bidding process is quite involved. The other problem is that it doesn't give some of the smaller companies an opportunity to bid, because then if they bid on ours, we have about 500 acres of property, there's 40 to 50, maybe 50 or more locations that they have to cut weekly, and to do that, a lot of these smaller bidders would have to go out and purchase additional equipment. And it's not, it wouldn't be fair to make them go out and buy all this equipment and then only have it for one year, and now they have all this equipment and they would have to still be paying it off more than likely. So we do it for three years, so it also gives the regular, the normal side, or the larger-sized contractors, an opportunity to plan their schedule, to know how far, you know, a few years out in advance that they have this job and that they can do it. Helps us with some, some pricing. So three years is, has worked very well for us, and I'm sure, you know, Lou Biasey and Paul Martin could, you know, confirm that. I'm sure they would prefer a three-year contract as opposed to a yearly.
Do we also take into consideration that they are a local company? Or, like you were saying, a?
No, it's a bid.
It's a bid.
It's the lowest responsible bidder.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments from commissioners? There are none. Any comments from staff? Any from residents? Name and address for the record, sir.
My name's Paul Martin from Eminem Lawn Care, and my address is Churchville, PA. I've been a contractor, a landscape contractor for Abington Township for close to 12 years. In some form, like Doug said, I've been part of the grass cutting for your township. Doug had give some, gave some numbers about percentages. I'm low bidder on Zone 3 and Zone 4, which doesn't really necessarily matter right now, but my price three years ago for Zone 4 was $11,800. Now it's $12,150. That's a 2.5% increase. On Zone 3, my price was $30,000 in '14, '15, and '16, and now it's $22,000. That's a negative 40%. I don't know how you're going to do any better than that, and the reason for those numbers is because a lot of the parks were shifted to Zone 1 and 2. So from my standpoint, I am the low bidder on Zone 3, Zone 4. I proved myself over 15 years of service to you guys, and I feel that it's actually a stab in the back that they're going to rebid this, because now, everybody else out there knows their numbers. They're already on all the journals, they're already publicly known, and it is a very competitive bid, and, you know, I just feel that after 15 years of service, bidding the job correctly, bidding the job with due diligence, I'm pretty much getting shafted because a third bidder didn't comply with the rules. A non collusion affidavit was supposed to be in the bid package. Myself and another contractor recognized that it wasn't in there, called the township, and they emailed us the non collusion affidavit, which we had signed and notarized. The third bidder, however, didn't do that. That's part of responsibility as a contractor. Once these numbers come out for bid, if this goes off for rebid, you know, the likelihood of me getting it back is going to be probably not as great as one would think. So I'm opposed to them doing that. It does say absolutely in every page of your contracts that the owners have the right to reject any or all bids. My point is, you're not going to get anything lower than this, and why wouldn't you just allow me or award me Zone 3 and 4, and if you want to bid the other part of it, Zone 1 and 2, do it that way? That's all I got to say. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments from residents? Comments from commissioners? I'm sorry?
That's Mr. Lou Biasey from Biasey Landscape.
Okay. Does he have a comment?
He said that Mr. Martin answered his, mentioned his concerns.
Commissioner Farron.
Thank you, President Luker. To follow up on some of those points, if that's not in the, the non collusion clause is not in there, does that automatically negate those bids?
No. The, the contract states, or the bidding documents state that if, that first of all, that there are certain documents that have to be supplied when you make your bid. The second part of that in 4.1 says that if these documents aren't there, that the bidder is responsible for calling us. I think in, in discussing it with the solicitor, I think that their concern was that when, when Mr. Biasey and Mr. Martin got their non collusion affidavits, the third bidder did not. And so even though they did not call to get it, which, you know, it says you're supposed to, they did not call for it, so they did not receive it. I wasn't in the office at the time, but that's what happened, so, I mean, it's.
So we, we probably wouldn't be going with those bids anyway, though, right? If they don't have the non collusion.
Well.
They, they have them.
They had.
The third party, if he doesn't have that included, we wouldn't be using that bid anyway, correct?
Well, that was a question I asked the solicitors, and the solicitors recommended that we reject them and rebid it.
Whose responsibility is it to get the non, the non collusion clause?
In the bidding documents, it states that the contractor who is providing the bid is responsible to review all the documents. If the documents that are expected to be submitted with the bid are not included in the paperwork that you receive, that they are to call us, and that we are supposed to comply with their requests.
Does the non-disclosure affidavit go out?
It's a non collusion affidavit, yeah.
I'm sorry, I meant to say that.
That's okay.
Non collusion affidavit, does that go out with the bid packet?
Typically. I just must have missed it when I was putting the documents together. It's about a 60-page document.
So did the other bids, the other bidders call for it?
Yes.
They called for it?
They, one came in and one called.
But the third did not.
The third did not.
And the third one was the low?
And did not, excuse me.
The third one that did not, was the low bidder on?
Was the low bidder on Zones 1 and 2.
Okay. So can I, what was the, can I just get the rationale for the, for the advice that was given?
Certainly. When one bidder contacts the municipality and indicates that there is, neither has a question or clarification, and in this instance, it was a clarification essentially that the non collusion affidavit wasn't included in the bid packet, then we are not able to just give it to the one person who called. We are required by law to issue an addendum for all entities that picked up the bid packet, so that everyone is on the same competitive ground. Once we did not issue it to the third bidder, they were at a competitive disadvantage, and the law requires that we keep everyone on the same footing. The bid specs are also clear that oral statements or oral clarifications are not binding, so we have to issue an addendum. We didn't issue the addendum to the, with the non collusion affidavit. Therefore, the low bidder, who did not have the non collusion affidavit, if we disqualified him for that reason, they would probably have a very good opportunity to sue the township.
Thank you. Can I, why did we ever make any of the numbers public?
The numbers are public, Commissioner. They were read publicly in this room at the opening, and then they were distributed to two separate organizations that provide the, the bid results to the public. Dodge Reports and I think the other one is CIS.
So even if you don't accept them, you make them public?
You are required by law at the time of the bid opening. Now, if you're doing it by pen bid, it's all up on a, on a computer screen or a TV screen. If you're doing it live in a room like this, you're required to read out all of the numbers, so that everyone there knows what's being bid.
Okay. Commissioner Schreiber.
Can the bids be separated out, which the gentleman who came up here?
If that's the way the specs are written, if you write the specs that you're allowed to sort of pick and choose, if you do it that way, you, you can certainly do that. But not now, because the way they were originally written, they were, they were written as one, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Spiegelman.
Just to, just to clarify your answer to Commissioner Schreiber, if we were to follow the suggestion from Mr. Martin and just award Zones 3 and 4 and rebid only 1 and 2, we would still be exposing ourselves to?
Because it's not the way the original bid specs were written.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Kalanowski, and then Commissioner Farron.
So why can't we just have this third person that didn't write the collusion, write it and submit all the bids as they were submitted originally? Is that not, so you have to rebid everything, so now everybody knows? My problem is with this, I guess, everybody knows whose bids are what now, so we're going back to a competitive state? Is, is that correct?
No. Well, there are a couple of things here. One is, I believe, and I haven't seen the bid tabs, I believe the company that didn't submit the, the non collusion affidavit, I believe they're low.
They are.
And so if we awarded it to them, the two gentlemen in the room would be able to, would be able to challenge the bids by saying they did not comply with the bid. And by not submitting that non collusion affidavit, you may be giving them a competitive advantage. The other issue is that there are certain things, there are certain deliverables which you can deliver after your bid, insurance certificates, things along those lines, but there are certain things that are required to be with the bid packet, and this non collusion affidavit was one. So once it wasn't included on the time that bid was opened, it's a fatal defect.
But that's a fatal defect. All the contracts didn't follow.
Excuse me, sorry. Out of the way.
I followed it.
Thank you. Solicitor, you want to continue?
No, I, I just, I, I think what is being proposed for the board to do tonight is, is in many ways really the only, the only option you can do. You award it to Gorkhan, two people sue you. You don't award it to Gorkhan, one person sues you. It's best to rebid all the bids.
Unfortunately.
Unfortunately. It's a, it's a, there was a defect. Yep.
Thank you. Thanks for the explanation.
All right. Everyone's asked their questions. Any comments from staff?
Excuse me, President Luker.
I think we had, Commissioner. I think we had them.
I'm sorry. Is this something we can fix moving forward? That doesn't happen again in how we write our bid specs?
I'm sure if, you know, you wanted to write that in there, I'm sure I could meet with the solicitor and discuss that.
Okay. Yeah. I think if we can for this time specifically and then move them forward to make sure this doesn't become a problem. And I'm not blaming anybody, but it's, I can't even imagine the frustration these two gentlemen are feeling and their companies are feeling. And pardon my voice, sorry. I'm just, it just feels like we're back to the corner without any good choices because of Mr. Martin, right, and another contractor didn't follow through with the appropriate paperwork. So it's very frustrating. I just, I think if you're just trying to make sure we don't make this mistake again.
Thank you. But good point, Commissioner Farron. What was your answer to his question?
No, I just, I will, you know, we could certainly speak to the solicitor and take a look at the contract or look at the bidding documents and see if there's some way to write them so that they're, so that this issue doesn't reoccur.
Okay. Thank you.
One other quick question. What is the timeframe on this rebidding? Because I'm sure these gentlemen in the room, you know, wanted to know the answer as quickly as possible of what's going to be happening. So how quickly are we going to turn around and try to, to the best of our ability, considering the situation, to make things a little bit better?
Depending on the decision of the board tonight, I have everything prepared to go back out to advertise on this coming Tuesday, which will make us comply with the two-week period so that the bid opening would then be occurring on the 31st of January. And it would be presented, the winning bids would be presented to the board on the Public Affairs meeting, February 1st. And then they would be notified of the bid award on February 10th, the Friday after the Thursday meeting. And that would be more than enough time for them to arrange their schedules and make sure they have everything in place for the coming season.
Thank you.
You have a comment, Mr. Biasey? Name and address, please, for the record.
Biasey, Biasey Landscaping, from Telford and Glen Side. I forgot what I was going to say.
We got three minutes.
Mr. President. I did.
Anything on the time?
Oh. Are you going to have a mandatory pre-bid meeting, Doug?
No, I'm not. Everybody, I don't think that's necessary at this point. There were eight companies that were there, the first pre-bid meeting, and there are minor changes. Everything is noted in the bid specs, so I don't really think that it's necessary. That's why I don't want to have it to keep the time short as possible.
The solicitor also mentioned that there wasn't nothing written about the noncollusion affidavit, but yet we got two emails from Andy Orals.
I don't think he said that.
No, I didn't. I said you, once one person inquired about the fact that the form wasn't submitted, we were required to issue a written addendum to the contract for everyone who picked up a bid packet. There wasn't an addendum issued, though.
We were required to do that.
That was after the fact, after the bids were open.
No. When, when certain companies contacted the township and asked for a copy of the noncollusion affidavit, at that moment, we were required, prior to the bids being opened, to issue an addendum attaching the noncollusion affidavit for all of the potential bidders.
Correct. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President. Mr. President? Commissioners, I'm sorry, change.
Probably a question for the solicitor again. Is there, or maybe Doug, is there a mechanism where the bid, the new bidding can be restricted to these three companies?
No. No. It can be open to anyone.
Darn it.
Excuse me, no, the gentleman behind you, sir. A normal procedure doesn't allow you to come back a second time, is that correct, Counselor? But I might allow you to come up after the show. Name and address for Doug.
Paul Ferruzzi, M&amp;M Lawn Care, 15 Brentwood, Upper Dublin. We've actually been doing this since Sue Foster was in charge, which is over 20 years. My only thing is, you know, I'm not going to get into the whole noncollusion, but it does say pretty blatantly in there that if you don't call, if it's not in there, call and get it. This gentleman failed to do that. Why he has the obligation to sue or the right to sue is beyond me. I don't...
Because the law requires that when we tell one bidder something, we have to give it to every bidder.
But it says it in the paperwork.
The law requires that if we give something to one bidder, we must give it to every bidder.
The only other thing I'd like Doug to reconsider is that it be a mandatory pre-bid meeting so that at least we have the right to see who's there, because we're already behind the eight ball with everybody knowing our numbers. So I think in all fairness, it should be a mandatory bid site.
Doug, what does that do to your time schedule if you had to have a pre-bid meeting?
Um, you know, I don't know that it's really going to have a lot of an effect. It's just going to, it'd probably shorten the amount of time the contractor, if it's a new contractor that hasn't looked at the contract or the bidding documents, that they will have less time to review the documents. Because I have to have that, that pre-bid meeting sometime in the two weeks that the bid is being advertised. So it would probably be like the week, two or three days before the bid opening, so it would be January 27th, 26th, something like that. I mean, I have no problem with it, but, you know, that's what it would give.
And you had a pre-bid meeting prior?
I had a mandatory pre-bid.
In the original bid, you had a pre-bid, you had a pre-bid meeting?
Yes. Because of all the changes that were, there were a few changes made. I wanted to speak to the contractors. If that's something that they, the contractor would like, I have no problem with that.
I would suggest sticking to the same timeframe as the gentleman, oop, sorry, as the gentleman had discussed, if we're going to have the bid, is to continue down the same lines. Would be my suggestion.
I'll write that in.
So we are going to have a meeting?
Commissioner Spiegelman.
Just to clarify for the solicitor, there's no, there's no issue if, if having another pre-bid meeting, I mean, I know obviously it's, it's more work on Doug's end, but having another pre-bid meeting ends up compressing the time that the contractors have to apply, that, that doesn't leave us in any kind of vulnerable position?
No. If we, if we set the timetable and everyone is being treated equally, then if it's, they have a week to fill out their bid, they have two weeks, they have three weeks, as long as everyone's being treated equally, the township is permitted to do that.
I mean, it seems, yeah, I mean, Doug, not to give you more work, but, you know, it seems, it's going to, realistically, it's going to probably be the same cast of characters. So how much of the applicant, how much of the bids, the packet's really going to change, given what the, given what these business owners have experienced? It seems to me like a reasonable compromise to have the, to just compress the time and have the pre-bid meeting.
I don't see any problem with that, Commissioner. And the package won't change in any way, shape, or form, except that it will certainly have the noncollusion affidavit in it.
Maybe put that on the front.
And that the dates and all of the required dates of submission will be included on that, notice to bidders.
Great.
And I'll have that to Maria tomorrow morning, very early.
Thank you, Doug.
Depending on the decision.
So Counselors, does the motion as stated here stand even if you do a, if we do the rebid?
Yes.
That's not going to change anything? Okay. Any other comments from commissioners? Any from staff? I think we went through this already. Okay. And audience? All right. So if, I think that's in the discussion. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the motion passes.
Mr. President, that concludes our significant public affairs agenda, or maybe it doesn't. Somebody?
Two opposed.
Oh, two opposed, okay.
Besides Commissioner Lestby, who else? Oh, okay.
Sorry, I jumped on the opposed. Now that concludes our public affairs.
Okay. Thank you. At this time, Vice President Stephen Klein, Director of the Finance Committee.
Thank you, President Luker. I'd like to call on Jay Blumenthal, the Treasurer, for the Treasurer's Report.
Thank you, Commissioner Klein. Good evening, everyone. First, I want to speak about the amount of money that was deposited in Republican Bank for the month, Republic Bank for the month of December 2016. Yeah, it was a forwarding slip. Total for the month was $1,005,28019, compared to last year of $2,048,407, which gave us a decrease of $520,388. Year-to-date, collective totals were $61,723,829, compared to last year of $58,170,934, with a gain of $3,552,895. As to the real estate taxes collected for December, we collected $221,361, with the year-to-date of $26,026,273, with the balance, the collective, $736,909. That gave us, for the month, by the way, an increase of $24,113. On two other subjects, on the 10th earlier this week, I took all unpaid taxes, my lien lists is what we call it, up to Norristown, and that closed out the year for me for 2016. And on another subject, the happy part of it all, you all received new bills being mailed out the first week of February. Thank you.
Yeah. Looking forward to it.
Thanks, Jeff.
Color-coded and everything.
FC1, motion to approve the investments for the month of November as previously circulated to the board. It was noted that investments for the month totaled $2,115,000. Interest rate yields ranged from 0.9% to 1.55%, and I so move.
Second.
Remove the second. Any comments from commissioners? Comments from staff or audience? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the motion passes.
FC2, motion to A, approve the November expenditures as previously circulated to the board in the amount of $4,114,378.76, and salaries and wages in the amount of $1,750,815.46. And B, authorize the proper officials to sign vouchers in the payment of bills and contracts as they mature through the month of February 2017, and I so move.
Second.
The second?
Second.
Remove the second. May I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Spiegelman?
Yes.
Sanchez?
Yes.
Rockman?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Trevor?
Yes.
Domit?
Yes.
Placido?
Yes.
Farron?
Yes.
Lestby?
Yes.
Pecker?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
FC3, motion to approve the advance and travel expense activity for November 2016 as previously circulated to the board. Advance and travel expense report were $0.00 and $648.74, respectively. Eleven-month expenses totaled $40,849.61, and I so move.
Second.
Remove the second. Any comments from commissioners? Any from staff? Any comments from the audience? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the motion passes.
FC4, motion to approve the clearing fund. The deferred revenue, expense, activity, and petty cash balances for the month of November as previously circulated to the board. Clearing fund receipts and disbursements for the month of November 2016 were $19,799.2 and $19,231.37, respectively. Deferred revenue, expense, receipts, and disbursements for the month of November 2016 were $6,027 and $982.55, respectively, and I so move.
Second.
Remove the second. Any comments from commissioners? Any from staff? Any comments from residents? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the motion passes.
FC5, motion to adopt Resolution Number 17-001, authorizing the finance director and his or her designate to invest township funds in any and all such financial institutions as permitted by the first-class township code, and I so move.
Second.
Remove the second. Any comments from commissioners?
Can I just ask, just for a brief explanation of what this actually means?
Well, had I been paying attention, I could answer that question, but I'll allow Kevin to address it.
Under the first, under the first-class township code, this has to be approved every year. You have the right to invest the money. It's just a standard resolution every year.
Thank you. That's helpful.
Any other comments from commissioners?
Pick, John.
Any comments from staff and/or audience? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the motion passes.
FC6, motion to adopt Resolution Number 17-002, authorizing the disposition of certain financial office records as set forth in Exhibit A, and I so move.
Second.
Remove the second. Any comments from commissioners? Any from staff or audience? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the motion passes.
FC7, motion to adopt Resolution Number 17-003, authorizing the disposition of certain tax office records as set forth in Exhibit A, and I so move.
Second.
Remove the second. Any comments from commissioners? Any from staff? Any from the audience? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the motion passes.
And FC8, motion to adopt Resolution Number 17-004, setting the compensation for the office of the Abington Township Tax Collector for the period of 2018 to 2021 as follows. $10,000 for the salary for tax collector duties. $6,000 for billing and collections of current sewer rentals. $6,000 for billing and collections of current refuse fees, totaling $22,000 for township compensation, and I so move.
Excuse me?
Remove the second. Any comments from commissioners?
I think you said 004. I think, I think you...
I said 005.
He said, we heard four down the center. We're right.
Any other comments from commissioners? Any from staff? Any comments from residents?
I guess the question's...
Laura Lehman, 1431 Bryant Lane. As you know, the tax collector's compensation has been an issue for probably eight of the 11 years, or nine of the 11 years that I've been doing this. If you look at this, it looks like $22,000 is what he's paid to collect most of what we have to collect. Instead, we have somewhere just under $200,000 for this particular office. But then, there are multiple employees also who are paid. There is in the neighborhood of between $400 and a half a million that goes to the tax collection. And I have asked to have those figures. I am constantly denied having them in a way that is meaningful. And it's an extremely important thing for it to be meaningful. Not only was I denied an opportunity to get them into meaningful fashion for all of us, because I think some of you don't know this either, but also, on top of this, after I tried to do it, other fees and things were added in to cloud the picture even further. So he was being paid for collecting, I don't know, pool fees or whatever else it was. And so the entire picture is a very, very, very complicated picture to find out what our tax collector is actually earning. And the necessity to do the finances of that sort, I think, are fairly important in this township. We have multiple places where the finances are an issue. So I would like to know if there would be some cooperation from yourself, Mr. Chairman, to, to actually, President Luker, to, to actually tackle this problem and solve it after this many years? Because surely $22,000 is not what Mr. Blumenthal earns for collecting the taxes. May I, may I have your word that we'll get to the bottom of this in a, in a fashion that could be understood by your fellow commissioners and the residents? I'm sorry?
Has Ms. Lehman been given an answer to this question? It seemed like it comes up every year.
Comes up. Multiple times.
Yes.
And she also claims that employees are being paid by the township. They're my employees, I pay them. She has too many different, too many statements that are not true. She's been explaining this innumerable times. Commissioner Klein has explained it to her innumerable times.
It's not...
She is getting false accusations here.
Well, this, see, this is, this is an effort at defamation of my character. It has not been explained in...
We're not going to...
Let me, may I finish?
Okay.
In a meeting where we sat with Mr. LaFever and Mr. Blumenthal, I was told, no, I would not get those figures. Okay? I was actually told, no, I would not get the figures that I needed to make the picture complete. I was given some figures, but there are many. For instance, as you know, Mr. Blumenthal collects fees...
Excuse me, Ms. Lehman. Aren't we supposed to be, aren't you supposed to be commenting on the resolution and nothing else?
Go right ahead. Keep avoiding it, Mr. Blumenthal. I just bring it up whenever I can. Thank you. I would like to see it resolved, and if you would like to help me resolve it, that would be good. Yes.
Mr. LaFever, you were going to comment?
Thank you, President Luker. Mr. Blumenthal, I did meet with Ms. Lehman. We did try to explain how the compensation is received. Her issue is she submitted to the township a worksheet, extensive worksheet. She wanted us to prepare for her.[1722.33] She doesn't understand it. It's somewhat complex, but she doesn't understand it.
I do understand.
But it's misrepresenting the facts, saying the township is withholding this information.
I do understand it, but I can't get the numbers. As, as you heard, he said, they would not give me the numbers. It is all of those numbers that go into what is being paid and what is being turned in. And there's nobody apparently checking it on a sheet that I can actually requisition.
It sounds like you've been given answers to everything you just asked, so.
No, I have not.
I don't think we're going to go through.
I have not. I'm telling you, I have not.
You said nine of eleven years. We're not going to make it ten of twelve.
Mr. LaFever just said he wouldn't give the answers to the other things on the sheet.
Okay, your time is up, and I think we've given you adequate time and explanation, so. Mr. Blumenthal, did you want to make a closing statement?
I just have one, one other comment.
Sir?
You had any comments? I'm sorry.
Yeah, she's done her comments. She can take them.
Ms. Lehman, you can take your seat, please. So Blumenthal, did you want to say something?
One other comment. There's an audit of the tax office every year. The figures are in that audit.
Okay, thank you.
I'd also like to comment on this. This ordinance, this resolution is because of the tax year. Under the first-class township law, we as a township have to pass this resolution for whoever might be the tax collector. Okay? This is under first-class township law. We also pay Mr. Blumenthal for business, mercantile, LST, all that on commission based on the percentages that are approved by the township. Only other years that are not given to Mrs. Lehman is she wants to know what the county pays Mr. Blumenthal and what the school district pays Blumenthal. I do not know what they pay him. I know what we pay him, and I can give that number, but that is not what she wants. She wants total compensation. And in the tax office audit, it is in there, and it shows total compensation. Also, Mr. Blumenthal pays all his employees and all his benefits for all his employees himself. The township pays for no salaries or benefits for his employees. Back in the nineties, they were done that way, but since nineteen ninety, has not been done that way. So what Mr. Blumenthal makes, he pays out in salaries.
Okay, thank you for that explanation, Kevin.
I just made one other comment.
Commissioner Klein.
And I've said this before. I sat down with Mr. Blumenthal probably, Jay, what, five, six years ago, and sent an email to Ms. Lehman explaining all of the expenses and tax or compensation that the tax office has, and basically tried to do, I guess, best case was a P and L statement before her, and, you know, she asked a couple of questions, the questions were answered. I don't, just don't think she understands it, so.
I thought we were through this before, so I, I suggest we drop it. It's been thoroughly explained, and I don't think there's any need to go down this path anymore. So having said that, do we take a vote on this? Any other comments from residents? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion passes.
That concludes the Finance Committee's agenda.
Okay, that concludes our formal agenda, and at this time, I'd like to call on Township Manager Michael LaFever.
Thank you, President Luker. I too have an announcement to make this evening. Last month, I informed the Board of Commissioners of my intent to leave my position as Township Manager in the spring of this year, and I appreciate the opportunity to express that intent publicly this evening. Although I don't have a specific date for my separation, I expect it will probably occur sometime in April to allow us sufficient time to go through the selection and recruitment of the next municipal manager. Regardless of the date, I assure you, I'll make every effort on my part to ensure that that transition is seamless. Everyone in this room recognizes what a wonderful community Abington is, and I appreciate the opportunity to serve this past six years. We're blessed with some engaged citizens, outstanding employees who take pride in their, in their performance, and excellent elected officials. I'm pleased I've played a small part in some of the improvements we've made the past few years, and I have no doubt you'll continue to excel in the future. Again, I appreciate the opportunity, and I wish everyone the best in the future, and please note, my comments are much shorter than Chief Kelly's earlier this evening. Thank you.
Mr. Bell? Name and address, please.
Raymond Bell, twenty-seventy-six Parkview Avenue. It's almost like a casualty list here, but I want to express my sincere appreciation to the Township Commissioner who has put up with me, answered every question that I've ever directed to him, and I want to just say how much I appreciate not only his dedication to this township, but the friendship that I consider that I have for him professionally and personally, and I wish you all the success in the world.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments from the public?
Laura Lehman, fourteen thirty-one Bryant Lane. As the last little go-round just showed, it is not the same for everyone in this township, and although you've always been able to bring people here to the podium who work with you and are willing to speak up for you, that, one of the things that moved me was the last meeting when I got the tape of the meeting. I, first of all, I did ask for the tape to be put on to where the video goes so that everybody could have that. That was denied. For what reason, I don't know. They had to take the time to make the tape for me instead of making it for everyone. They made it just for me, and everyone else has been denied being able to have that. Those are the kinds of things that after nearly eleven years, in February, it'll be eleven years that I've been coming to virtually every meeting, and the reason that I've come is because things have not been right. You do a lot of good things in this township, a lot of good things, but if you trot out the good things you do and bury all the bad things, and some of the bad things are really bad. And that is what, what struck me on the audio tape when I listened to it, is one commissioner went on for quite a bit of time about how everybody was respectful to each other and everybody was polite, and that has, has not been the case whatsoever. I politely asked for eight years to have those figures for the tax collector, and I got partial this, partial that, sat down in a meeting, put the chart together because I wasn't getting the information, and those are, those are not the only things in this township. As you know, some of the things that have been complete disrespect have affected people's quality of life and their health and literally risked their very lives, as I think everybody on this dais knows. And you all made a decision recently to actually put people in a situation that had more potential danger than one could imagine. Okay? And.
Ms. Lehman, your three minutes are up. You have closing?
My three minutes are up already?
Correct.
Okay. So that, well, that's another thing, in the, in the manner of the disrespect. For instance, one night, you had a commissioner who slandered me because he didn't understand something I said.
Ms. Lehman, you have some.
And you wouldn't allow the speaking to continue until understanding ensued, and that's been a common theme again and again.
Ms. Lehman, your three minutes are up. Could you please sit down, please?
And you're saying that politely, but it's disrespectful. Somewhere, there needs to be respect. The disrespect comes when you are polite, but you say no. You may not have this. No, you will not get the figures.
I'll repeat, no, you may not have this.
You will not get it.
Could you sit down, please?
Yes.
Thank you. Closing comments, Commissioner Bowman.
Just good luck to Chief Kelly and his new endeavors up in Harrisburg with Josh, and certainly to our, the new incoming chief, Livinggood.
Mr. DePlacido.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Yes, reiterate, chief, although I don't have the proper drinking hand, congratulations and salute. You're welcome.
Commissioner Farron.
Thank you, President.
Were you finished, Jimmy?
Can I say one?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
All right. Just a quick plug, the weather's nice, so we're going to talk about Abington Little League Baseball real quick. Registration is now open online for East Abington Little League, and you can access that site and sign up your child for either baseball or softball at www.eastabbingtonll.org, or you can come see us in person. We'll be at the McKinley Firehouse on Saturday, January twenty-first, from twelve PM to three PM. And like chief always likes to hear at the end of our meetings, please drive like your kids live here.
Thank you, Jimmy.
Take it away, Tom.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Farron.
Thank you, President Luker. Commissioner DePlacido. I just want to give a quick word of thanks to Chief Kelly and to Mr. LaFever. You will always be the first chief of police within my work and the first township manager within my work, and I want to thank you for setting the tone for the level of professionalism and respect and thoroughness of the job you've done in my time here and what I'm going to be expecting in, obviously, I think the incoming chief knows that, and whomever our new manager will be, there's going to be a high bar set, and I want to thank you for, for doing that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Gillespie.
I want to just, I guess we've sang this all along. Congratulations, Chief Kelly. Congratulations, Chief Livinggood, and we'll miss you, Chief Kelly. You know, it's been great. I've known you a long, long, when we were both young, back in the day, and of course you too, John. And Michael LaFever, we will miss you too, but we still have some time, right? That's a good thing. Okay? Thank you again.
Thank you. Commissioner Hekker.
Thank you, President Luker. I'll echo those same sentiments. Chief, your comments tonight were heartfelt, and your commitment and dedication to the community have shown through in many ways. I'm grateful to you and all the members of the department for the assistance you provide everybody, and in particular, to us up here on the board. You, you make it easy for us to do our jobs in difficult circumstances, and we're grateful. An example of that for us right now is the beginning of a very long journey on Edgehill Road. Commissioner Spiegelman and I are fielding all sorts of concerns and complaints from residents as the Edgehill Road Bridge is being reconstructed, and Officer Freed and the other officers who are out doing additional patrols have been very reassuring to the residents this week. We appreciate their openness to feedback about where the trouble spots are, and will continue to monitor this. It's a necessary project, but definitely going to be a disruptive one during the course of the work. And I also wanted to mention, I thought tonight's recognition of local business owners in front of the board and the community was a really interesting idea, and I'm wondering, you know, if we ought to think moving forward about ways to do this on a regular basis to spotlight residents who are trying to help build the local economy. I, I don't know exactly what that looks like, but I thought it was a great touch. Thank you.
Good comment. Commissioner Kalanowski.
Thank you. Chief, thank you. We've known each other a long time. We've, you've left a great succession behind, you know, and I wish you all the luck in the world. I do. John, thank you. Pat and Lloyd back there, thank you. Roger, thank you. Michael Gallagher, I've got a funny story. For years, I've been volunteering, and every, I would say, oh, I was at this event, and, well, who was there? And I said, well, this really tall guy. And we're like, well, what's his name? I said, I can't remember. I just know he's the really tall guy. So finally, after about three or four years, I've gotten to know Michael, and he, he's a great guy. I know he'll succeed wherever he goes because of, chief, and I thank you because of that. The two officers we got tonight, you, you just saw the, the great generations of people in Abington that come out of both those families, and I, I just think that's, that's great. Great to see, great to see. Michael, we're not done working together. I can tell you that. I'm sure there's many more adventures before you walk out that door permanently. Seven-Eleven, you know the issues that have been going on there. I'd like to thank everybody, the police officers that have helped me. John, you've sat in those meetings with me. Roger, we're still working on this. Lauren and Michael will continue to work on that, and I thank you. Get back to me sooner. We'll get this thing hopefully moving in the right direction and make Ward Six a little safer. And I can't not say something about a, a young lady who was killed, and John, you were a great part of that, and I, it was such a great celebration. Maybe another time, you could tell the story on how you, how, how having the police department did such a great job on that. And Grace, there's a memorial for her on Monday at New Life Church at one-thirty. Then at three-thirty, we've invited everyone, the community, back to the VFW. There'll be light refreshments, and just for the community to get to talk and to find out other situations that go on in Abington, and just, it's a heartfelt thing there. She was a part of the world, and if you guys didn't keep on this, I don't think we'd be where we are today with this case, so, thank you.
Thank you. Vice President Klein.
Yeah, I wanted to take, take a moment to thank the staff that have been involved in getting the TAP grant that was, that we were awarded. It's a four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar TAP grant for implementation of the portion of three-point-two miles or three-point-three miles of the Master Bike Plan that I work with Commissioner Sanchez and several staff members that are here or not here, Assistant Manager Waymire, Ed Angelo, Alfred, we're involved, our consultants. Look forward to seeing that get taken care of, to connect two train stations going through and picking up some schools, so I'm glad we got that money. And a special thanks to the secretary, the department, the Secretary of the Department of Transportation, Leslie Richards, who I had conversations with, and I believe that her recommendation and her support helped getting that TAP grant. The other, last thing I want to say is zoning ordinance is going to come back in front of us, I think sometime in February, there's going to be a date for the revisions to the last draft to be presented to the Planning Commission, and in a short timeframe, dates will be, several dates of potential board meetings in front of the Board of Commissioners will be circulated to the Board of Commissioners for sometime in March to have a separate night to go over the revisions that were implemented from the recommendations that were both passed on by the Planning Commission and approved by the Board of Commissioners. So look for those emails. I think Manager LaFever will be taking care of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Sapone.
Congratulations, chief, and good luck, Mike.
Thank you.
Thanks for your service, both of you.
Commissioner Spiegelman.
Thank you, Mr. President. Couple of things. I wanted, I almost was going to start singing "Bridge Over Troubled Waters" while Commissioner Hekker was talking, but to echo his sentiments, I do want to thank the entire police department for your on, it's going to be ongoing help. It is going to be through at least next November that the Edgehill Road Bridge is closed, and, you know, when you're detouring, when you're going through neighborhoods, I think I can say on behalf of Commissioner Hekker, if you're coming from the, from the Ward Ten direction, be kind to the people who live on Chester and, and Butler and Hamilton. If you're coming from Ward Eleven, please, please be kind to the folks who live on Rockwell and on Ferndale, because this is, this is tougher for everybody. So thank you in advance for driving carefully and reading the signs that say detour. Welcome to Officer Jones and Officer Jones. The four, the four individuals that we, that we honored tonight really have something in common, Lieutenant Gallagher, Chief Kelly, Chief Livinggood, and Manager LaFever, which is that they are gentlemen, men of, of class and a tremendous integrity and sense of service. And I just want to say, obviously, the, the fact that, you know, Buckingham Gaines, an amazing chief in, in Mike Gallagher, is a testament to the incredible leadership that has developed within the command staff of the Abington Police Department, a testament to you, Chief Kelly. No, I haven't worked with you, certainly have known you as long as, as some of the folks here, but I've learned a great deal from you, and you have, you have been, you've been very, you've been very good to me, very patient with me, and very good to the, the folks in Ward Eleven, and I just want to thank you. You've always taken a very personal touch when helping out in every situation, and, I mean, you know, you're a living legend. Everyone's going to talk about that, but I want to just thank you personally. Very interesting that, you know, the, you know, the understated, the understated promotion of, of a, of a soft-spoken, true gentleman in John Livinggood. Congratulations. You're, you know, you're, I, you know, you're, you're not a, you're not a very flashy guy, but you are, you really have, you have as much integrity as any person that I've known, and there is not a, there's not a soulless world who's better to, to become our new chief. Congratulations to you. I look forward to, to working with you, and it's, it's just, it's wonderful. And Manager LaFever, I probably have bothered you as much as any commissioner ever has, and that includes back when you were in Springfield, and you have always been, from the moment I became, from the moment I became commissioner, you have always been extremely patient, extremely kind. You've taken, you've taken the time, you've put up with an awful lot for me, including when I, when I stayed in your office during the ice storm so I could get Wi-Fi.
John, John, Michael's going to be here for a couple of minutes.
I figured I'd get it out of the way now.
This might take till April.
Thank you, Michael, for, thank you for your service, and thank you for your class. And finally, Commissioner Kalanowski, thank you so much for mentioning Grace Packer and the memorial. Rest in peace, Grace. Thank you.
Commissioner Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. President. Chief, you know, echoing everybody's sentiments, congratulations, and I'm delighted that your new title includes the word "chief," so we can continue to call you that. I won't be caught off guard in having to learn something new. And, you know, I'm delighted you've left us with new chief Livinggood to continue to run the chief training program for all of Pennsylvania municipalities that will hopefully continue to the future. So, thank you both gentlemen, really. And Manager LaFevere will have more time for goodbye, but really, thank you for your service, your impeccable service over the years, and really, truly a class act, so, great work, gentlemen.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Rothman.
Thanks. It was a year ago that I was sitting up here for my first meeting, but tonight was one of the more special nights. Chief Kelly, all the best. We'll be seeing you. Chief Livinggood, it's good to, good to have you on board, a little sooner than expected, but, you know, we all wanted you to be that guy, so we're ready for that. And again, Michael, thank you. I've only been here for a year, but you've helped me along the way, so thank you for that. And happy new year to everybody. It's, it's, this is a pretty fun meeting to be back, so I know we'll have a lot of work that we're doing, and other ones won't necessarily be as fun as tonight in many ways, but tonight, we saw why we all want to be sitting up here and why we should all be really, really proud to be a part of this community and particularly to be serving this community. So, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Morris.
Chief Kelly, congratulations. I'm not one bit happy about your news. Not one bit. Michael, I'm not one bit happy about your news either. So, obviously, I am very unhappy tonight. Thank you.
Commissioner Markman.
Thanks, Chief Kelly. You know, it's funny, retirement, you're supposed to relax, and you're kind of going into a hornet's nest there, and you got your work cut out for you. So, congratulations, it's a big job, and I think the state needs somebody to go in there and kind of straighten things out and have the ethical, you know, kind of morality that you've, you know, that you can engender. So, congratulations and good luck, and I'll tell you, that's going to be the least relaxing retirement, I think, in the history of retirement. So, and I'm excited to work with Chief Livinggood, and it'll be a good future. And we, Manager LaFevere, we're going to have here, he's, you know, very, very well-known and well-respected manager in the, in the whole region, so, and we can, we can talk about, you know, those things later, but, you know, right now, I just want to say good luck and thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Schreiber.
Congratulations to the new officers and to Lieutenant Gallagher on his new position. So, where to start? I'm going to make this short. Congratulations, John Livinggood. He'll be a wonderful new chief, we're all looking forward to that. I'm not going to say goodbye to Michael yet because he'll be here, and we're going to stretch that one out, so. And Chief Kelly, my, I can't say partner in crime because it was partner in not crime, going to Norristown on a regular basis and working on the, co-chairs of the opioid task force. We got to know each other a lot better on those car rides, and I remember you telling me about your, what you planned to do with retirement, and this was not what you told me. So, but it sounds like a wonderful opportunity for you. And while we're actually on the subject of the, well, let me finish that and just say goodbye and good luck, and I know we'll see you, continue to see you. But just as the last thing with the opioid task force, since Martin Luther King holiday is coming up on Monday, I want to, we've had announcements of various activities, all of which are really worthwhile, but there is another one that's going to be happening at the Abington Art Center, which is a blessing bag event, and it is to fill bags for people who are struggling with opioid addictions. There's a wonderful group called Angels in Motion, and they've been filling these bags and distributing them, and it's become their mission, and they do wonderful work, and they are looking for people to help. So, I want to give them a plug. They will be doing that at Jimmy Help Me Out, 11:00 a.m., I believe, at Abington Art Center on Monday.
That's correct.
Yep, 11:00 a.m. So, before you go to all of these other events, another very worthwhile group to help out, and these people need all of our help and our thoughts and prayers, so. And good night, everybody.
Thank you. Commissioner Schreiber, before I give the final comments, Mr. Blumenthal, you have a comment, and then Chief Kelly.
Pretty much a suggestion, something Commissioner Hecker brought up, which I think was a fantastic idea. The tax office has new people registering businesses constantly, it's almost every day at this point, and we've been more than happy to work with different wards, different commissioners. There are businesses that go into business that go in under the, not necessarily under the radar, but they're not as visible, because a lot of businesses are home businesses, but we would be able, more than happy to share with the different commissioners of those wards who were starting up a business, something you might find unusual or want to bring up before the board, but I thought your suggestion was fantastic, and we'd be more than happy to work with everyone.
Thank you, that sounds great.
Thank you. Chief Kelly.
Mr. President, members of the board, over the years, we've seen a little bit of decline in the interest in the Martin Luther King Junior Holiday Celebration, and I just wanted to remind everybody that Monday is that celebration over at the Abington High School. And I don't know there's ever been a time in recent times when the message of the non-violence and working together in our communities is a more important one, and I hope that we will have a nice turnout for that. I want to tell you that it's almost certain that our soon-to-be Attorney General, Josh Shapiro, is going to be there at the, at the event and to recognize the good work that has been done in Abington Township. And there's another event that I just want to tell you about because I really think it's very important, and it is so symbolic having it happen on the Martin Luther King Celebration. And Valerie Ward, the president of the Willow Grove NAACP, myself, Deputy Chief John Livinggood, and Deputy Chief John, or Pat and Lloyd, are going to sign an agreement, a formalized written agreement that you have there in front of you. And it's been called by a number of people, have seen it in some ways, a historic agreement because it is the police department and the community and the NAACP agreeing to work together on certain key principles that are of mutual interest to both organizations and, of course, our betterment of our community. And I, I don't mean to, it's not intended to pat all of us collectively on our backs or anything like that, but at a time like this, with what's going on in our society, with what's going on between police departments and their communities, I think this, that's an excellent example for the other communities and other police departments. It talks about that we will be working together on issues like communication and have periodic meetings, and that they will assist us in providing police training, especially on issues of sensitivity and sensitivity towards treatment of minorities. The police recruitment, you've noticed, I'm sure, that we've done a better job at getting diversity in our recruitments in recent, recent years, and it's partly because of the work that's being done by our officers, but all, who will be recognized at that Martin Luther King ceremony also, but also by the, work by the NAACP and so on, including even work together on misconduct complaints by the, towards the police department and so on. So, I'm asking you to make note of this because I think it is a historic step forward in setting an example for other communities, but I also hope that it will help attract some people to come out for that, for the Martin Luther King Day Ceremony, and because it certainly deserves attention because it's something positive, positive in our community and the leading example for our society. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. You said everything I was going to say, chief, thank you. The one, the couple closing statements I want to make, referring to the Martin Luther King Program Monday, just so everyone watching knows that two of the recipients are sitting here with us this evening, and they've been together for close to 35 years, and that's Chief Kelly and Deputy Chief Livinggood. Deputy Chief Livinggood is going to be receiving the Special Recognition Award, and I liken it to the best supporting actor in Hollywood. And I think that, I think Chief Kelly has, has been blessed with probably one of the best supporting actors at his side for over 30 years. So, it's only fitting that the two of you be honored at that momentous occasion. And with that, I would just close with saying, Michael LaFevere, I know you're going to be here for a couple more months, but it's been a pleasure and an honor to work with you for the last seven years. And the one glaring thing I've really come to appreciate is the chemistry you have with Kevin and prior to Kevin, Susan, your financial wizardry with a budget and working with numbers and working with Susan and now Kevin, I think is a compliment to your, your intelligence and you're just a gentleman, and it's been a pleasure to work with you. So, I look forward to spending the last six or whatever months, maybe less than that, with you. So, with that, again, please come to the Martin Luther King Program. We only have five more days with the chief, and after that, you've got to get his autograph Monday, because after that, I don't think he'll be around, because I think he's going to be relocating to Harrisburg or close to it, anyway. So, with that in mind, if all minds are clear, thank you for attending, and have a good night.